I would move that we accept the consideration of bills to be paid in the amount of $660,774.82. Manual check in the amount of $1,300. Payroll and liabilities for 9/11/2020 and 9/25/2020. The amount of $672,197.93. For a total of $1,334,272.75.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have Councilmember Bailey has made a motion to accept the consideration of claims. And I have a second by council or by Mayor Guard. Is there any amendments or discussion on the claims?
No.
Okay, if none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Is there anything additional that the committee needs to review or discuss?
Your honor, I also did want to point out that included in this finance packet is a claim for high country construction for $348,606.88. It is for pay application number four for the Riverton Water Supply Project. So it is a large one, so I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
I appreciate that, thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, seeing nothing, the Finance Committee will stand adjourned at 6:46.
I now call the October 6, 2020 regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Councilman Hancock will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilwoman Bailey will leave us in vocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dearest heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that we all enjoy. Thank you for this wonderful community and state that we are able to live in. Thank you for the many, many law enforcement, emergency response and military personnel that protect us every day and put their lives on the line. Thank you for the many blessings that we have living here in the city of Riverton. Please bless us to your service. Please help us to make the right decisions for the city of Riverton. We ask all of these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Tim and Mike, appreciate it. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, your honor, Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schotze.
Here.
Councilman Kari Rota.
Here.
Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. The chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilman Larson.
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Schotze and a second by Councilwoman Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare a quorum as present. Approval of the agenda, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Rota, a second by Councilwoman Schotze. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item which is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on any other item may speak now. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Mayor Guard, counsel?
Quite this much of an audience.
They must have heard you coming.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think so. My wife wasn't even sure I was coming. I just wanted to take just a moment this evening and talk about the 1% that we have coming up, the vote on it, and how important that is to our community. Brief history. After an FCAAG meeting in Lander, the county commissioners dealing with PIL, Payment in Lieu of Taxes, the interim city administrator, John Derrington, made the comment to Bill Urbikite and myself when we were coming back from the meeting. And he says after having that discussion with all of the FCAAG members that there's one thing that is important to all of the municipalities in Fremont County, and that's fixing our roads. And that was where that seed got dropped and we took it from there and were able to get it passed. We did a lot of hard work, and I know you, Mayor Guard, worked on that as well to make it happen. We all know what a blessing the 1% is to our county and community, $12.5 million to Riverton and over $20 million to the county, lesser amounts to the other municipalities in the county based on population. So everybody's getting a piece of the action. And after this publication that has been put together by Mr. Butterfield, I presume, and his staff and whatnot, it's a real strong... They've just done an outstanding job of putting that together and whatnot. As you know, we've just had the Fall Festival on Main Street. Jeremy Cruz, a force committee member, made the contact to have a table at the festival. But we had... He had a prior commitment in Thermopolis and couldn't make it. He called me and asked if I could go down and man the table. And I said, sure, I'd be happy to help. So I said, who else is coming? And he says, you're it. And I thought, oh, wonderful. So I called Jim Gores, and Jim's a good friend, and he came down and is always willing to help on things like this. And he came down, and then Dell McComey came over from Lander. Dell too realizes how important it is to Lander. And one of the reasons that I'm here this evening, I was concerned that there were no contractors, no elected county officials, no elected city officials, no senior staff, no other force committee members, and no other citizens. In my humble opinion, given how important this issue is to the city and our future needs, we should have had the largest, most appealing, and eye-catching table at the event. Instead, we had a showing, but it was pretty weak. I have heard the comment that a city... by a city employee that elected officials cannot be involved in a political issue due to the Hatch Act. And I am vaguely familiar with the Hatch Act. And so I got on the internet, looked it up, and read a little bit more about it. And according to the information I was able to get, it's a federal law that applies to federal dollars, okay? And it only applies at the local level if you're dealing with federal dollars that are coming to a municipality. And so at the local level, it's not appropriate in your official capacity to advocate for a political issue, but it is entirely appropriate to give out factual information on an issue. And that's exactly what this was, was factual information to our voters that are coming up. And you also, as a private citizen, can be involved in such efforts. I remember on the Fourth of July, we had a parade, and I had a picture on the front of the Ranger, as I recall, with a force committee meeting of four that says, "Vote for the 1%." Well, I mean, if they're gonna get you for a Hatch Act, I was way over the line on that one. But... And do you really think that Patrick LeBron, our county prosecuting attorney, would prosecute you for promoting our 1%? I don't think that would ever happen. This tax may pass, but I am sad to say that it will not because of the hard work of those that have a responsibility to our community or those who will benefit the most from it. It will be due to the goodwill that it has and the responsible way that we have dealt with this gift to this point. If Stephen Weaver, my city administrator, and I had taken this laid-back approach, we would not even be here talking about it. It categorically would not have passed if we had been so lackadaisical about it. I hope that we will make a stronger showing in the time left before the election in November, as in my opinion, we cannot risk losing this income. The anti-tax feeling is strong in Fremont County, especially after having just passed the half-cent tax, and early voting is going on right now. I've talked to two people that I was visiting about this issue, and they said, we've already voted. I didn't know how they voted, and I hope they voted for it. But, you know, I think we just need to get out ahead of this and push it as hard as we can. $12.5 million to our contractors is critical, I think. Thank you, Mayor Guard.
Thanks, Mayor. Anyone else wishing to address the council? On... Do you have concerns?
Ma'am, can you approach the podium, please?
Kind of new to this. So, and we're just kind of moved here, so I haven't even actually been here a year. But at first, we saw the half a percent signed, and somebody told me it's supposed to be for like the businesses, incentives, and an airport was involved. And I watched a couple of Hatch meetings, things. And now I got a big old sticker on the concrete saying that our community had hard work or some crap like that, 1%, about this 1%. So what is really going on? To me, that sounds like 1.5% that you're trying to raise your taxes?
Well...
And what tax is it actually?
So there are two different, separate taxes. The half-cent tax was for use at the airport and for ground transportation. And then the balance, the first 30% went for those two, and the next 70% went for economic development inside communities. So Riverton will benefit from that tax, about $600,000 a year, to try to bring businesses, jobs to Riverton, Wyoming, and to enhance life here in Riverton. Now, the one cent has been with us for... We've passed it twice before, and so this will be the third time it's up for the opportunity...
Is it one cent? I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt. Is it one cent or 1%?
It's one cent on your sales tax. So, sales tax typically, if we don't have these extra taxes, is 4% in Riverton, Wyoming. Because we have them, and we've had this one for eight years prior to... So in Fremont County, anything that you buy has a sales tax applied to it that makes it a five-cent tax. So as Mayor Wartness pointed out, we've been the benefactors of that 1% tax, and we have dedicated that to fix the roads and infrastructure in the city of Riverton. So what we use that for is to replace roads that need to be fixed, water lines that need to be fixed. And it's really crucial. We have a list that we could get to you of all of the contractors and all of the projects that we've done in those eight years. And all of those jobs have stayed with local contractors in Fremont County. And so that $12.5 million has rotated through the community to create jobs and to keep our roads in good shape. So it is a sales tax, and in my opinion, sales tax is the fairest tax there is. You can make the choice to purchase or not purchase, where every other tax is just completely forced on.
Yeah, well, some things you can't make a choice whether you purchase or not purchase, and this is pretty much a dot-com area on top of it, because there is hardly any business. And the few that are left, there's a lot of it closed. I actually, we came down from Minnesota, but part of the reason was the tax issue, right? So we bought a house here, and I haven't... I don't even own it a year yet, and I have two different tax bills already. One says 1804 or something. I was like, cool, it's only $4 it went up, right? Then a few weeks ago, I got another one, now it's 1880-something. You know, that's the kind of stuff that I'm worried about, because I really don't want this place turning into the same crap where I just left.
Sure, we appreciate that.
You know? And as far as the road thing, I've noticed, I don't know, I didn't seem... It doesn't seem like anything really was wrong with the roads when we got here. It seems like maybe some of you guys should consider of not trying to spend money that you don't have. You understand?
Sure.
So, you know, I mean, everybody's got to cut back, budget back. Everybody lost a lot of money. Most of these businesses were closed, so you don't have as much revenue to begin with. And then to continue with the same spending-happy-type attitude doesn't work. I mean, you know, everybody's got to come back, and, you know, the rest of these people don't find their money on the street either. We're, for instance, are on a set income. This is a retirement check. I don't get pay raises in those type of matters, you know? So does everybody else. But you can't sit there and, you know, just say, well, we're coming short on something, and, well, let's just raise taxes for it. Because it's not just that one item, it's everybody else wants a raise on it too. You know, maybe you should really look at, you know, not spending money that you don't have and cutting back some of these projects that you were planning, maybe move them out to a time where actually, you know, you have more revenue coming in.
Sure.
You know, instead of dumping everything on everybody else around here. And I was like, I want this, and poof, there you go, let's raise your taxes and raise everything else. You know, it doesn't just stay with one item, it really doesn't.
Well, and to give you some background and give you a little bit... First of all, I should have asked you your name, could you state your name?
Oh, Karen Bremer.
Karen, it's nice to have you.
I live on West Ben, 2130 West Ben Avenue.
It's nice to have you with us, and we appreciate you moving to Riverton, Wyoming, okay? And so to give you just a little bit of background, so that you know where we're coming from, the state of Wyoming this year has had a $880 million shortfall.
I understand that, so there's probably every place in this whole country.
And so the city of Riverton, when you say we just pass a tax, we really don't. We took $1.3 million out of our general fund this year to try to alleviate the problems that are there. But what we have is a bunch of aging roads, and I could take you to those. Gannett Drive, which we're in the process of replacing right now, completely came apart, and it does what's called trampoline-ing, where the water underneath it actually moves when we drive a vehicle over it. And so we're required for health and safety, so you can get a fire truck down that road, we have to fix that road. And so that's where these dollars go. They really don't just get wasted, and they're not frivolously spent.
It seems like it, because the top of the road, like for instance, over by Smith right there, that whole part, I don't see anything wrong with it. I don't know why you gotta rip all that side off. Then when we first got here, for instance, Federal Road, I saw you guys paved it all and this and that, and it was constructed, because we stayed in that hotel for quite a while trying to get in our house. And then it's like, here comes spring, let's rip it off again. You understand where I'm coming from, that's what it looks like. Now, there are some areas in this town that I figure, yes, definitely, absolutely needs fixing, but that's not where you guys are at. That's not where they're ripping the stuff up and fixing the stuff.
Well, and so I could give you some more information on that. Federal is not our control. Federal is a state highway.
Okay.
And the state does that. So that's not anything that we did... We did have to pay a whole bunch to do it, okay?
Well, can't you tell them, people say, look, this doesn't really need to be done?
No, ma'am.
You know what I mean? Instead of just ripping shit up just for the hell of it, just so you can say, I did it?
It's just like I can't tell you what to do at your house. It's their highway, and they take care of it the way they do. And they're also... Maine is that same... Is that same process. Those projects are state projects. And so when you want to see the one cent in action, we would give you a tour of those. And those are all... Those are all roads inside the city, and we're kind of proud of those. And so I would, if I could, I would meet with you at your convenience and work with you to show you where that money's spent, and I don't think you'll come away with the thought that it's frivolously spent. We just took out a water line on Maple that had holes in it the size of golf balls, and we were losing... Estimation was from 2 to 5 million gallons of water a month, Kyle? I hate... I don't want to overstate that, I don't want to be a Joe Biden or a... The water was... That many gallons of water was going through our water treatment plant that we were losing. And so these aren't necessary repairs. These aren't frivolously done without any foresight or interest in how your money's spent. And so what we would like to do is get a chance to educate you on where that money's going and how much that tax is going to cost you. Now, the half-cent tax only costs about $80 per person a year. And that's a pretty... That's a pretty good expenditure of those dollars to get what we've got on that. And so the half... The full-cent tax should only be costing you about $160 a year. So I realize that things are tight, but that's how we had to... 60 years ago wasn't our choice either. None of these guys up here made that choice 60 years ago to pave all these roads, but now we have to maintain them. And so that's what we're doing with these two funds. So if you would like to give me the phone number, I would love to work with you and show you where we spend that money, so you don't think it's... And you're welcome to your opinion. If you feel like it's frivolous when we get done with the conversation, you can have that opinion, and we would like you to... I'd like you to vote for the half-cent and the one-cent, as Mayor Wartness pointed out. He and I worked really hard to get that one cent through. What was the sales tax in Wisconsin when you left?
Seven and a half.
So we still got some room to get there, don't we?
Yeah, but that's exactly one of the reasons, because, see, it doesn't stay with that, right? It does not stay with that. It's also like the property tax. We went, in five years, we went from $1,200 to $3,800, okay? Now, that's a hell of a chunk of money, you know? And then they add all these other fees to your water bill, you know, whether you even have it turned on or not, it's a minimum fee, it doesn't matter. The house could be empty, it doesn't matter, you just add stuff to it, you know? Then the extra on your electric, and the extra on your gas, and the extra at the gas pump, and everywhere else. To the point to where it's like, what the hell?
We do understand your plight. So, Mike?
Oh, yeah, that's kind of the reason why I'm a little bit edgy about that.
Do you have a pen with you? Kyle, you've got it. Kyle, put my number on... My cell number on there, did you? And we will work with you and get you some information so that you have it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sounds good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else that would like to address the council? Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, your honor, approval of the minutes, September 15, 2020, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, October 6, 2020, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for October 6, 2020. And approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of September, 2020.
Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your honor, the Finance Committee met tonight and approved the consideration of bills to be paid in the amount of $660,774.82. Manual checks in the amount of $1,300. Payroll and liabilities... Payroll and liabilities for September 11, 2020, and September 25, 2020, in the amount of $672,197.93, for a total of $1,334,272.75.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Schotz has the motion. Councilwoman Bailey has the second. Any council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. We're now to item number nine, and that's the mayor's proclamation. Proclamation in support of the Riverton police officers. Whereas the Riverton Police Department plays an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community, and whereas in moments of danger and despair, the first people we turn to are law enforcement officers. These often unsung heroes risk their lives so that we can live in peace and security. And whereas, the negative, negative national headlines commonly overlook the good work done by the police departments throughout the nation on a daily basis. Whereas Riverton police officers continually treat all people equally and would not hesitate to risk their lives in order to save the lives of others. And whereas the Riverton Police Department commits to continuous training, skill enhancement, inter-agent, inter-agency coordination, making them a vital member of our community. And whereas, we owe a dutiful respect and humble gratitude to the city of Riverton police officers and who work tirelessly to protect us and sacrifice so much to maintain the civil, and defend civil order in our community. Therefore, I, Richard P. Guard, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, do hereby express sincere thanks to the police, to the Riverton Police Department and all the police departments throughout the nation for their diligence and good service to our communities. In witnessing thereof, I hereunto set my hand this sixth day of October in the year of 2020. And I can't tell you enough, we've, we've said it a little bit from this podium over the, over the, most of this year, all of our council members have that feeling of how important you guys are to us, and we appreciate you being here and doing your jobs day in, day out. So I don't know that we can, we can thank you enough. We have a special thing happening tonight. We don't get this very often. Lots of times, if you can believe it, we've worked a empty crowd. It's hard to believe, isn't it? And it's nice to have all you guys here, and, and we have the opportunity to introduce our new dispatchers and officers, and we'll turn the podium over to the police chief for his report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to have Megan Ayers come up, Caitlin Gergen, Lisa Looper, Summer Cassidy, Taggart Hammerlink, Sean Tetro, Preston Richardson, and Arnie Zartucci, please. So, as everyone knows, we've had a group of new employees, so we're here to introduce them tonight, and so that's what I will do. Okay? And if any of you guys want to come up and take pictures, you're more than welcome So Megan Ayers, she graduated from Shoshone High School. She's one of our new dispatchers. She's been working for RPD for about a month, and she just got married last week. Caitlin Gergen, right? Caitlin Gergen, she went to school in Riverton. She has two dogs, no kids, I've been informed, and she's in the process of buying a house. Lisa Looper's our evidence technician. She's a mother of three girls. She graduated from Wind River High School in 2001. She was hired as a dispatcher, but chose to choose the evidence technician position, so we have another dispatch opening. Summer Cassidy is our new administrative assistant, so she works closely with myself and Captain Romero, and I can tell you that she has been a godsend for me. She's from Texas. She has three boys. She's married to her husband, whose name is Chad, who's getting out of the Marine Corps after 20 years, and they've moved to Lander, and she has a master's degree in business administration. Taggart Hammerlink, raise your hand. So Taggart is in the Wyoming National Guard. He just recently won Citizen Soldier of the Year for the National Guard. He won the Police Officer of the Year for the Riverton Police Department, and what else? Is your girlfriend here?
She is.
Okay. Stand up. This is his girlfriend. Sean Tetro, our new officer, he's from Boston, Massachusetts. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and he worked as a strength and performance trainer in Texas. And he's been a personal trainer in Lander for the last few years. Arnie Zartucci is a 20-year deputy with the Fremont County Sheriff's Department. We just stole him from the Sheriff's Department. He's working at the airport with Mylan. He has one son and one daughter. He's been married for 22 years, and he loves working with the guys at the airport. And then Preston Richardson is married with two girls. He graduated from the Riverton High School, and he's excited to serve the city of Riverton. So thank you all very much. So if their other house would come up with their badges, please, put their badges on them, and Mayor, if you want to come down and swear them in, that would be great.
We'd like all of you to raise your right hands and follow after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support and obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And that I have not, that I have not knowledgeably violated any law relating to my election or my appointment, or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge my duties of my office with fidelity.
Discharge my duties with fidelity.
Thank you. That's the way I felt about it.
I love that shirt on you.
Thank you.
I don't know you.
Just kind of congratulate you.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome, congratulations.
Yeah, I'm bored, man.
Good, see you.
Okay, I got to go home.
Back.
Back to work.
Yeah, I know.
We would really like to impress upon everyone that's, that's here and everyone in our listening audience how important police officers and dispatchers are. And when I pick up the phone and I call, and lots of times my request is simply, could you unlock the door so I can get in? And down to the fact that I need real help, I truly do appreciate the way that our police department responds and the work that they do for us. And so I can't say it enough, and I can't say it kindly enough, we truly do appreciate our law enforcement in Riverton, and you guys do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Nobody's going to judge you if you don't want to stick around the rest of the meeting.
But the fun's just getting started.
Yeah.
Public hearing and consideration for a transfer of location and ownership of a retail liquor license from the Tipsy Tulip LLC to the Starting Gate LLC. City Clerk report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and council before you tonight for your consideration is a retail liquor license transfer of ownership and transfer of location application submitted by Starting Gate LLC doing business as Starting Gate. And it will be located at 1409 West Main Street for the remainder of the 2020-2021 licensing year. The license is currently in the name of the Tipsy Tulip LLC and is operational at 409 East Main Street. Representatives from Starting Gate LLC are also in the audience tonight, should you have any questions of them. The Wyoming Liquor Division has certified the application is complete, the proper fees have been paid, and proper notice to the public has been advertised. Therefore, based on the information provided through the application process, staff recommends approval of the transfer of ownership and transfer of location application as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schotz has the motion. Councilman Bailey has the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare a public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
My name's Steve Wazeski, and I can answer any questions you would like to ask, or I'll try to.
I was going to say, I have some real hard questions. So are you going to be in the old VFW building?
Yep.
Okay? And how soon are you going to open?
Depends on how the remodeling goes, but hopefully earliest, first of November, worst scenario, first of December.
Is it going to be a supper club?
No, it's going to be more of a, right now, more of a frozen food, finger food, until this COVID deal gets over with and everybody gets back on track. More of, you know, get together, and we've got some other ideas that we want to bring up to you guys after this gets through and get your thoughts on that also.
Super. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any, is there anyone else that would like to address us? Seeing done, Your Honor, I would approve that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Bailey and a second by Councilwoman Schotz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thanks, Carla. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the retail liquor license transfer of location and ownership to the Starting Gate LLC located at 1409 West Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion, or we have a motion by Councilwoman Schotz and a second by Councilman Rota. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item number 12, public hearing ordinance number 20-007 and 20-009, finance agreement for Visionary Communication, Inc. and Contract Communication, Inc. City Clerk's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The provided franchise agreements are presented for consideration on the first of three readings tonight. Both items are recommended, recommended for approval as presented. The city of Riverton recently redeveloped its franchise agreement format with the assistance of a consulting telecom attorney. The agreements proposed for approval contain all the new language and were reviewed by all parties. The city is in receipt of email confirmations from both proposed companies that the proposed language in the presented agreements is acceptable. Both agreements are proposed to be uniform in an effort to provide consistency. The term of the agreements are for five years, with the agreement continuing thereafter until such time as one of the parties seeks to terminate the agreement or renegotiate. The franchise fee is set for 5% in a one-time $2,500 payment. The 5% will be applied to services as described in Addendum A. While there are not any changes recommended, if council chooses to make changes, any desired changes are recommended to be consistent across both ordinances in an effort to promote uniformity. Tony is also in attendance tonight. He's the one who worked through the agreements via telephone, so if you have any questions for him during the hearing, he'll be available. Thank you.
Thank you. We probably have to pay you extra because you're on again.
I know.
Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 20-007 and 20-009 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 20-007 on first reading, an ordinance granting the non-exclusive franchise to Visionary Communications, Inc. within the right of ways of the city of Riverton, Wyoming. And proposed ordinance number 20-009 on first reading, an ordinance granting the non-exclusive franchise to Contact Communications, Inc. within the rights of way of the city of Riverton, Wyoming.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Moved.
Councilwoman Schotz has the motion, and Councilman Bailey has the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare a public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and any other applicable law. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Steve Mossbrook, owner and president of Contact Communications, which most of you guys know nothing about, because it's a competitive local exchange carrier, certificated in Wyoming, but doesn't really come out in the public very much. That is the entity that is building fiber. That is the entity that is building fiber on federal, and we've already built it along Main, and we're expanding it into other parts of the city. The franchise agreement is intended to permit us to continue this and to use the poles, use the streets, use the entities that are governed by the City of Riverton in order to continue. Tony has been extremely good to work with on this, and I was very pleased to see the result. What I would like to ask is if we could be permitted, after first reading approval, assuming this gets approved, to continue with our work on federal because we have some customers who are clamoring for service on the fiber. And I won't go into detail now, but we have been working without a franchise agreement, and I would like to continue because we have a time problem in trying to get to them before the freeze, before winter really sets in hard. So that's the only consideration. Beyond that, I'll answer any questions anyone has as to what this is all about. And the visionary agreement is identical to our own.
Okay. Why don't we, is there anybody else that wants to speak on these agreements? Why don't we hear from you?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, there's a council. I'm Brian Woodton. I'm the CEO of Visionary Broadband out of Gillette. My brother and I are the majority shareholders in the company, and we've been, in two months, we'll be in business 26 years. So I just want to introduce myself and offer myself up for any questions. Just as informational, we approached the City of Riverton and I talked to Tony about a use agreement for a small fiber bill to get us redundancy in and out of Riverton. We're really big on redundancy and second routes. And I promised to him at that time I would have worked through a franchise agreement, and here we are. So been great to work with. I've enjoyed it so far.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate you.
Should I stay up here for questions?
Anybody got a question? You're okay.
And Mr. Bailey, is that a hire? I mounted 22 and a halfs in high school with my hands.
Looking for a job, let me see.
You're hired right here now. So, we're going to, no one else wanting to speak to the agreement, close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Bailey and a second by Councilman Hancock to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The motion passed. We are now going to consider the ordinance number 20-007 on first reading for Visionary Communication INC. franchise agreement. Do we need to amend here that they want to continue work, or is, are we okay with them continuing work? We should be okay, should we not?
I think we're okay, Your Honor.
Tony, you in the earshot?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I have, I have no challenge with that as nothing has been proposed to change. I don't think it would be a challenge to have them get going. I think it would work good for everybody.
Super. Well, I would appreciate that in the motion, whoever makes it. Chair would be interested in that motion.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve ordinance number 20007 on first reading, amended to allow for work to proceed immediately.
Councilman Bailey has the motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Schotz has the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
And, Your Honor, I would move that we approve ordinance 20-009 on first reading, again with the ability to proceed immediately with their work.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion, Councilwoman Schotz has the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Down to item 15, public hearing to consider, for consideration of ordinance number 20-008, first reading for the Riverton Municipal Code 10.04 Right-of-Way Closures. Public Works Directors' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Title 10 of the Municipal Code Centers on Vehicle and Traffic Regulations, Chapter 4 of that title addresses administration and enforcement, and the proposed ordinance makes this section of code more up-to-date and current with practices that we implement today. Specifically, ordinance 20008 repeals existing language and replaces it with verbiage again that reflects our current practices. It authorizes the Public Works Department in addition to the Police Department to implement temporary traffic control measures to mitigate emergencies, weather conditions, and/or large gatherings. This will allow both departments to implement measures related to anything that's a special event permit, but also extending to construction, water breaks, and other operational concerns. The proposed ordinance also removes the requirement for City Council to give consent in order for the Public Works Department to apply traffic markings such as crosswalks, turn legends, or striping. It also updates outdated terms like policeman and updates that to officer, and then it removes street sprinklers and updates it to just city equipment. I hope you enjoyed in your packet the definition and history of street sprinklers. In addition to these proposals, many thanks and credit to Kristin Watson, our City Clerk, for establishing a streamlined permit process for public gatherings and events. And ordinance 20008 makes reference to this process and makes clear the city's expectation of individuals hoping to close city streets for gatherings and events. It also allows the City Council the option to establish a fee to close public streets and affect the flow of traffic. Your Honor, that outlines the changes. It's our recommendation this is adopted on a first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin, you thought I'd jump you, didn't you? Would you please read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 20-008 on first reading, an ordinance amending Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, revise Chapter 10.04 Administration and Enforcement of the Riverton Municipal Code, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Schotz, and we have a second by Councilwoman Rota. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. I now declare a public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute, with all applicable and all other applicable laws. I would ask the individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, the Chair would, would request the closure of the public hearing.
Your Honor, seeing none, I would motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Councilman Rota has a motion, Councilman Bailey has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thanks, Carla. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 20-008 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Rota, and a, and a second by Councilwoman Schotz. Further discussion, is there any? Tim?
I guess, just to clarify, are we kind of in the minority that we were having to have the council approve all street signage changes? That seems, that surprises me that that's the way the ordinance was, but it seemed like that's atypical. Am I right with that?
Your Honor, I haven't done a full investigation on it. It's the first that I've seen, and it doesn't match our practices.
Because I can't think since the time I've been on here that we've talked about street signage except for that one mile per hour sign that we wanted to request a change of, but that's been it. Well, and I guess also the school zone change, but that's...
And, and, Your Honor, just to clarify, this is strictly speaking, painting the roads. You would still have authority over the change of limits and the establishment of school zones. We would take those to you, but for refreshing any type of lane striping, turn legends, crosswalk by the code, we have to get your permission before we get them, and that, this takes that out.
Thank you.
And Chief, you're not too worried about Public Works kind of being involved in the traffic, temporary traffic regulation?
Your Honor, not at all. Myself and Kyle work together very well. We figure this out.
Carla and Tony, we're getting backfeed from your, from your mics. Can you mute? Thank you. So really what we have here is a bookkeeping ordinance that we're trying to, to clear up, and, and we're trying to put the powers back in the hands of the two guys that have to make those decisions quickly. We have a water outage, we surely don't want to call the council together and say, let's close the road, right? And so, in, in reality, that's what we're doing here, is giving those individuals the ability to do their job. So, I think it's just modernizing what, what the ordinance is. So, we appreciate Kristin catching it, and we appreciate the work, you know, you guys do this already, so you work really well together, and, and when you need to, there's, we have closures, and we have them almost all the time. So, thanks for the work that you do. We appreciate it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Memorandum of Understanding on the Blue Sky Renewable Energy Guarantee, Community Development Directors' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This grant application's been in the works since 2019, when the then Senior Citizen Center Board President Frank Tanner first approached Rocky Mountain Power. Since then, the city was required to move through the grant application because we technically own the facility. This council approved application of the Rocky Mountain Power Blue Sky Renewable Grant Application Program in June of this year, and on September 11th, 2020, we were notified that the grant had been awarded in the full amount requested. The total project cost estimated is...
Total project cost is...
Thousand dollars. And this grant will contribute 60% of that. A private donor and the senior center itself will cover the remaining cost of the, the total project. Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, before you this evening, outlines the requirements by Rocky Mountain Power to comply with their grant program. The Senior Center Board of Directors has reviewed the requirements and has also submitted their commitment to meet the obligations of the grant program. At this time, staff recommends moving forward with the project and authorizing the mayor to sign the MOU as presented. I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Rocky Mountain Power Blue Sky Renewable Energy Grant Memorandum of Understanding.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schotz has the motion, Councilman Hancock has the second. Further discussion? Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, because I've seen some comments. Is there still feedback? No, it's gone. Comes and goes.
Maybe off our mics, I don't know.
There were some comments that I saw from people on the internet when this was brought up before. This is nothing, we're not going to have any money that's coming from the City of Riverton that's going towards this project, correct?
Your Honor, that's correct. That's why we also obtained the letter of commitment from the Senior Center Board. There are some additional requirements past that of the project cost, but they're very minimal. It will be items such as, they're going to need to hang a plaque that thanks Rocky Mountain Power in the Blue Sky Grant Program in the lobby or somewhere visible within the center. They're also going to have to purchase biz partner grant or blocks from Rocky Mountain Power. That will come to about $10 a month for approximately a year. So, those items that, they're also going to have to allow Rocky Mountain Power access to the facility for potential education opportunities. If somebody, you know, if a fourth grade class wants to see a solar project, they can bring them down to the Riverton Senior Center, so.
Fabulous.
One more thing, too, Your Honor. I, I guess I wanted to note, too, we, was this, the remaining balance was $50,000. That's coming from one person in the community? Is that correct?
Your Honor, that's correct.
I just think that's impressive. I know they don't name that person, but I really appreciate them being willing to put in money for our senior center. That's awesome.
I would love to name the individual, but I don't have permission to do so.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carla, you there?
I'm here, Your Honor. Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. That concludes our business for this evening, and we'll now turn over to Council Committee Reports and comments on the roundtable. And so, let's start with Cory? Somebody behind you?
I was just double checking. Mayor, I don't have a whole bunch. We did have our rec board meeting last night, and we've chosen our volunteer and groups of the, for the year. I'm not going to say names yet because I want to make sure that they've been informed before I publicly announce that. And we do still have some funding there as far as beautification and recreation. If you're going to go for recreation funds, it does have to be spent by the end of this year, so that would be December 31st. The beautification does not have that timeline. I was unable to attend the Community Engagement Committee meeting, but I did have somebody, and I wanted to give a kudos, but somebody had told me they were on the City of Riverton website, and they were pretty impressed with the navigation and everything on it. So I, I just wanted to give a huge shout out to our guys taking care of that because it is a great, it's a great tool to have if, if you want to make anything from adding stop signs or possibly even luminaires in your neighborhood, any complaints or issues, and it's a great way to get in contact with any of your, you know, staff or city officials. So I just thought it was pretty neat that somebody had pointed out to me that they were pretty impressed with that. So with that, Your Honor, that is all I have. Thank you.
Carla, I could go to you, and that would let you maybe sign off if you'd like to.
I, I really don't have much to report. I know that the, the Solutions Committee is meeting this, let's see, I think it's on the 15th. Of course, I was in at Finance tonight, and that's about all I've got.
Super.
I appreciate you letting me call in tonight.
Glad you did. Glad to have you. Rebecca?
Yes, Your Honor. I've been getting a lot of emails and phone calls from concerned citizens about the hotel on Main Street and how they're wanting to make that a new COVID-19 quarters for housing those individuals, so, and I've contacted most people back by phone or by email, letting them know that, that we're aware of their concerns and that the city is, you know, looking into different types of things, and I just want those that are listening to know that as well. Also, Mayor Warpness had wrote a letter to the editor as well, I don't know if everybody saw that, but it was a pretty good letter with some good information in it, but I don't want the community members to think that their concerns aren't being identified because they are, and I actually had a lengthy conversation with the city administrator tonight as well in regards to that. So I just want people to be aware that, that we are, we are listening and, and we're looking into it. And then, on the more positive side, the Community Engagement Committee met last Thursday. It was a really good meeting, and we were really motivated and still are in regards to planning for the third annual Christmas tree light... in regards to planning for the third annual Christmas tree lighting on Main Street. So, we've, um, we're, sort of working with the city to get that part of that road closed off so that we can have people on the street like we did that first year. We're going to go back to the way we did it that first year and just keep it really simple and sweet, instead of trying to do all the big stuff that they did last year. So, we're just using that night as, as a simple time for families to come out and enjoy the tree getting lit. And then we'll have cocoa and, and that type of stuff like we did before, and hopefully a photographer. And I've got a line in to Santa and Mrs. Claus, and they plan to be there as well. So, um, it's pretty exciting. But other than that, that's all we discussed, and we are going to meet again in, I think it's the twenty fifth. So, we're trying to meet every two to three weeks, uh, but until the holidays, just to make sure everything's going good. Julie Bowler reached out to us as well because of downtown, wanted to plan some type of holiday festival. So we'll, of course, assist with them as well. And I don't know if we did the Fall Festival since the last meeting, but they did an amazing job on the Fall Festival downtown. We, I had so much fun down there. It was just a great day. I kept, I'm still talking about it now, because my husband didn't go with me. And every day, I'm like, that was so much fun. So I told my sister, hey, she lives in Lander, said, hey, will you talk with your city council members and see if they can get a Fall Festival Lander, just so I can go to another one? It was just such a good time. So good to see everybody out and having a good time. And I've been really into treats lately, like chocolates and stuff, so. That was pretty awesome. But, um, other than that, Your Honor, that's all I have.
Is there any chance you could talk to the weatherman early about the really, really cold?
The cold?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. No, well, also, we also planned, though, the first year we had those heaters. Porter's has also, um, Porter's Supply has donated the propane heaters again this year. So we'll have those as well to try to keep a little bit warmer, so.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Good move. Mike?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I got to participate with my wife in the Fall Festival. And, uh, again, my wife and Mayor Guard and Chief Murphy got to be the judges for the pumpkin contest. And they did a pretty good job. And, and it was a good time. There was lots of people out. It got a little bit breezy, but, uh, you know, fall was definitely in the air during the festival, but it was great. We had lots of people out, lots of different, you know, booths and, and food vendors and all kinds of stuff like that. So I, I think it was a good time by all. And then I did get to attend the airport board meeting this last month. And it seems like a month since we've met, but it's only been like three weeks. But, um, again, the airport numbers just keep climbing. They actually had one day that we had forty-two people get on the plane, which we couldn't have done before United got here. And I think we were at seven hundred and seventy people this last month, which is probably higher than the average of what we had last year, I would assume. We had, in January, we had like eleven hundred people, but that was the highest we had been in many, many, many years. And so, again, kudos goes out to the FAST Committee and all the people that have been working on the airport. And thank you to the, um, voters for approving the half a cent tax that's going to help us with that minimum revenue guarantee. And so, um, I think we've really taken a huge step forward in keeping the Riverton Airport viable. And they've got economical flights in there. You can fly from Riverton for about the same cost you can fly from Casper. So it saves you two hours and, you know, in the wintertime on snowy roads, that's huge. So I think it's great that we have that service available to them. And, uh, so, pretty wonderful stuff. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Tim?
I enjoyed the Fall Festival. It was really a good time. I, uh, I've really been impressed with all the different things that we've had, uh, in the community. Street dances, Fall Festival. I just really have appreciated how much we've been using the space we have. I also am really impressed with just how well it's been working out to have the farmer's market over at the city park. So I guess just grateful to everybody that's been putting a lot of work into just getting the city just having activities and things like that going on. I don't think, I, I, I would have said the same thing as Cory for the rec board. I didn't get to attend the meeting, but I was aware we had, I'm looking forward to the announcement of the Volunteers of the Year. Let's just put it that way. I think it's going to be great, so.
It's, huh, bruh, 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 bruh. That's the name right there.
Well done. I understood exactly what you said. Maybe if you didn't, you might be needing to get your ears checked. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. So, which one of you want to be the city administrator?
I think he's still on, I think he's still on the phone.
Tony, are you still with us?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. For the sake of, uh, avoiding possible feedback from our system, um, I don't have a whole lot. I was able to attend the Fall Harvest Festival. It was outstanding. Just a really great job of coordination, and, uh, a lot of good work went into that. I was able to have a family member fly in on our, on, on our aircraft this year, uh, this last week. Received a great report, and it was a pretty full flight, uh, as Councilman Bailey pointed out. And so, we, um, we've experienced that firsthand, and, and it was a great flight, they said. It was the best part of their leg coming all the way from Louisiana. At this point, Your Honor, I don't have too terribly much to add. I appreciate you allowing me to, um, participate via phone this evening, and I look forward to seeing everybody next week.
Thanks, Tony. I have the opportunity and to meet with the county, uh, two county commissioners last, in the last three weeks at, um, a meeting, and we hammered out the MOU for the half cent. And I think that's going to go a long ways. And I would like to thank, uh, those two councils, those two commissioners for their efforts, Mike Jones and Larry Allen, for their willingness to come and to, to help us work through that. I also attended an F tag meeting in Pavilion at the Roost. And, uh, um, those F tag meetings in years gone by, we used to have, those were dinner meetings, but we have changed those into work sessions, and those are about a four-hour work session. And I really do appreciate, um, the Roost hosting that for us and allowing us to use their facilities. The, the numbers at the airport are truly solid, and we need to thank everybody, FAST, the guys that work up at the airport, Sky West, all the way down the line, how fortunate we are to have that, that working and bringing those, I think the report I saw today, we were one passenger up from last month. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, um, and I think we were seven, Kyle, you got it in your head, seven eighty, weren't we, passengers?
Your Honor, we were seven sixty in August and seven sixty-one in September.
Fantastic. And so, uh, we're fortunate to have that airport, and we're, we're really fortunate that we're able to do the work with that and, and keep, uh, that moving. So, um, the other thing that I've had, um, opportunity to get back involved with is, uh, coronavirus is, uh, has spiked just a little bit. And, uh, and, um, Fremont County Emergency Management Group is on, on the calls. And I just wanted you to know that, yes, those, um, those numbers are going up. And, and that's probably all the explanation that we can get is that those numbers are going up because of, um, school, uh, increased volume. Statewide, the numbers went up seven hundred and sixty-six last week, and, uh, potential positives went up a hundred and five. Recoveries went up six hundred and forty-one. And so, you know, that, that's just a game. It's hard to keep those numbers all in place. The real important thing that I would like to point out is we've had zero deaths in Fremont County for a number of, of weeks. We have had fourteen deaths, though, and so I want people to stay vigilant and understand that it's an important, um, thing that we need to pay attention to. In Fremont County, our cases went up, our positive lab tests went up sixty-six, and our probables went up ten, and our recoveries went up fifty-one. Active cases are, are listed as only twenty-five. And so I think that's a little, these numbers are such a moving target that it's, it's difficult, and it's, it's not easy to get those numbers understand, to understand where exactly we are, we're at. But what I, why I bring that to you is I want you to understand that the county officials, our health nurses and, and, um, your public officials, uh, are, are constantly working on these numbers and trying to get, we had a shipment of P P, uh, P P E come in last week. I believe it was fourteen, um, skids of, of product that came into the county offices, and they disturbed, distributed through the, through this, uh, Fremont County. And so, it's, it's an ongoing process, and, and we want people to be vigilant and to pay attention to what's going on there. But to be real truthful, um, we've damaged our economy about as hard as we can damage it, and we need to, we need to figure out ways to get back to work and do what we can do. Our sales tax numbers are, are doing well, so is our use tax numbers are doing well. And so, we appreciate everybody that's involved with those. The motel on Main Street, um, I've been in contact with Senator Bebaut, and Senator Bebaut and, and I are working on that to try to see if there's some things that we can do there. The Fall Festival was, uh, a pleasure to be involved with. I appreciate and want to thank all those businesses on Main Street for their activity and their willingness to come out and spend another day. Chief and I, and, um, Tony, um, got to judge the chili cooking contest. And, and, um, Chief was willing to, to do all the stuff that had tequila in it, so. He saved me from that, so it's nice, nice to have him with me. So, uh, I appreciate him and the, and the work that he does. Or on that subject, impressive what you've done with the Police Department.
Thank you.
Appreciate your hard effort there. And I sit in those staff meetings and can feel your frustration of how hard it is to get somebody to apply for those positions, and, and you do a good job.
Your Honor, I feel like this group is a long-lasting group.
They look like they are good, so I appreciate all that effort. And I think Mayor Warpness has a good point. And I, and I, I know lots of times people, and I, I don't, city staff can't do this, but politicals can. That's why we're elected. The one cent tax is an important process for the, say, to Wyoming. As dollars are retracting and as cities have less money to spend, if we're going to maintain our streets and, and our inner structure, we need to maintain that one cent. And I would encourage all the voters to go out and to help us pass that and to talk up those, uh, projects. You can go to the city website. It's all listed there. All of those monies have been spent in county, which we can't do that on very many projects. This is, this is an anomaly. This is something that doesn't happen very often. And, uh, to get all of those dollars, which are twelve point five million dollars spent in our community, creates jobs. That's what it does. And it makes us have employment and gives us the opportunity to do the things that we need to do. And so I, I do, uh, think Mayor Warpness is correct and that we need to, to voice our, our acceptance or non-acceptance to that as we get the opportunity. So unless there's anything else to add, does any, does staff have anything to throw in? No? Yes, Ernie?
As of three, this is Ernie Over from wildtoday.com.
Yes.
Uh, as of three o'clock this afternoon, we had one hundred twenty-four active cases in, in Fremont County. Eight hundred and fourteen cases, ninety-two probable. We had, uh, six hundred seventy-six recovered and sixty-nine probable, the fourteen deaths. And the twenty-five persons you mentioned were the new infections that we had since Friday.
Okay. I just got this report. Um, I was on a, on a teleconference call, a Zoom call yesterday morning with it, and then they came into my office today. The other thing that needs to be pointed out is that we have been running with almost no hospitalization, and we have seven hospitalized, uh, at this, at this point. And so, um, we, we want people to take that seriously and to pay attention and, and do your due diligence. That, that needs to be something that we pay attention to. So, with that said, if there's no other, Megan, you want to say something? Okay. We stand adjourned at, uh, eight.